President Mumford, Vice President Gerard, School Board.
Board, there we go. I'll start over. Hello, how we doing? President Mumford, Vice President Gerard, School Board members, Dr. Linford, Mr. Luffel, it's my pleasure to introduce to you tonight Brian Garrett. Brian Garrett is the Deputy Director of Military Affairs from the Utah Department of Veterans and Military Affairs and happens to be the source of our military support team in our school district. So, without any further ado, I'll turn it over to Brian Garrett.
Good afternoon, I almost said good evening, good afternoon. President, Vice President, Superintendent, my friends, good to see you. Want to take just a minute, if I could, and express our appreciation to the district for the work that you've done with the military support team, specifically Casey and Francesca and the team. What I don't know that people, many people realize is this program that was, kind of came together on a whim, if you will, as we were looking at some of the opportunities to help military kids, has set a national level standard and is getting a great deal of attention at the national level for what right looks like when it comes to taking military kids, to take care of military kids. We had the opportunity about a year ago to have the Deputy Assistant Secretary of Defense for Military Community and Family Programs come learn about the program here, and she stayed very in touch with the work here. We had the Assistant Secretary of the Air Force here earlier this summer, and Mr. Wagner walked away very impressed with what we were doing, Superintendent doesn't know this, but I had the opportunity to meet with the Assistant Secretary of Defense about three weeks ago, and he is very interested in the program and what the district has done and the success the district has done, and turned to his staff and said, "This is what right looks like, and this is what we need to be doing to take care of our military kids and our military families here." I was telling Casey in the back of the room, the President of the Military Child Education Coalition is monitoring this very closely, and in January, we have the opportunity to have the first spouse of the Department of Defense, Shereen Brown. Her husband is General CQ Brown, who's the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff. Ms. Brown will be here in January, and one of two requests she had was to visit with the team here and find out what all of you are doing for the military support team. So Superintendent, and to all the Board members, thank you for the support you've provided this program and given this program the ability to, you know, the bandwidth to be creative and innovative. What I have here tonight, in one of my capacities, I'm the Vice Chair of the Utah Chapter of Employer Support and Guard and Reserve. ESGR is a Department of Defense entity that works with education programs, employers, and other groups to support our Guardsmen and Reserves. Davis School District is the largest population of Guardsmen and Reserves in the state, even though there's not a guard armory in Davis School District, and nearest guard installation is actually at the airport, the Air National Guard Base. But ESGR, again, is a Department of Defense entity in working with those partners, and they have an awards program, and I have here our Seven Seals Award. The Seven Seals represent the seven seals of the guard and the reserve components, and the Seven Seals Award is the highest level award that a state chapter can provide to an entity for their support of the Guard and Reserve. This award says, "Presented to Davis School District Military Support Team for Meritorious Leadership and Initiative in Support of the Men and Women Who Serve America in the National Guard and Reserve." So on behalf of the Employer Support and Guard and Reserve, and on behalf of the Utah Department of Veterans and Military Affairs, and our military and veteran families across the district, thank you for what you do, and Superintendent, can I present this to you?
Yeah, I can hand it over. (APPLAUSE)
Thank you. We really appreciate Director Garrett. We feel the same pride in our military support team. The work they're doing with families is critical, and I just came from the legislature and heard similar accolades to what you shared across the country, so we really appreciate the resources that you've provided that made it possible for us to do this work. Thank you. We're going to move on to our next item, which is one of our favorite ways to start workshop, and that's with a learning-first presentation, and tonight we get to spotlight Holbrook Elementary. So I'm going to invite Ms. Tracy Robbins to come forward, and she'll introduce the school team.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for this opportunity to do one of the wonderful things that we love best, which is celebrate the wonderful work that's happening at our elementary schools. Today, you are going to hear from Tara Best, who is the Principal at Holbrook Elementary, and her administrative intern, Carrie Anne Carter. Without further ado, I'd like to invite them to the podium.
President Mumford, Vice President Gerard, Dr. Linford, and Mr. Luffel, and our amazing Board, thank you so much for having us here today. I am so excited to be here and to tell you all of the amazing things about Holbrook, because I just love Holbrook, it's my heart. And I have a PowerPoint, if we could, perfect, thank you. I'm just going to skip right past that agenda, but I'm going to start with our mission and vision, because this really just exemplifies what we are and who we are. We, when we formed our mission statement, we really wanted our youngest learners in our building to be able to tell us what that is and to know why we're here. And so, it's simply just four statements: We Belong, We Are Safe, We Excel, We Are Huskies. And we put a lot of emphasis on that "We Belong" piece. You can see in the picture there, that's hanging right in our entrance in our hallway, because we just really want everyone to know what that is. And then I also wanted to start with our mission: Together, we will ensure high levels of learning through collective efficacy to provide a safe learning environment for all We have a lot of programs, this is not a comprehensive list, but these are a lot of things that we just want to talk about today and kind of share with you. We do have four preps in our school. We have PE, computer, and music, and one that is new over the past few years is our Culture and Climate Prep. So this is, it's a 15-minute prep, but the students get it once a week, and it is based on our SEL standards. We use the Harmony Program, and the students work on things like being grateful, and you will see, you know, things throughout the school that kind of exemplify that. We participate in the Decathlon, the Spelling Bee, the STEM Fair, and we have a Vex Robotics Team for 5th and 6th Grade. We have a chess club, choir, and our school musical, which I want to invite everyone out to come and join us. It's in March, we're doing Frozen Junior, and we're really, really proud of our musicals. We would love for everybody who can come to come and visit that. We do six showing, so lots of opportunities to come and see that. We have what we call House Council, but that's really our student council. So our house, we use the Ron Clark Academy House System. I don't know how familiar you are with that, but our students are divided up into four houses, and it's more of a mentorship model, so there will be kindergarten through 6th Grade students along with adults in each house. And so our student council, we aptly name our House Council. We implemented a Hope Squad yesterday. Yesterday was our parent meeting, so that's fairly new to us. Our community events, we had a fundraiser called the Husky Hustle, where we raised $7,000 to help support technology in our school. We had a bounce house, kids ran laps, and a lot of community businesses donated food for us. We had a huge turnout for that, and we are getting ready to this spring have a family bingo night for our parents and kids to come out and just have some fun with us. This will be our fourth year of doing the cereal domino effects of kindness. So during SEL Week in March, we ask parents for volunteers of cereal boxes, and we line them up in the hall like dominos and try to be very careful that we don't knock them down while we're setting them up, because last year we collected almost 500 boxes, and then we donate those to the Bountiful Food Pantry. And then, last week, we just had Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, and we also are a preschool hub this year. I wanted to talk a little bit about our committees and how we're focused on becoming a high reliability school. So high reliability schools, Level One is for a safe, supportive, collaborative culture, and so just wanted to speak about our committees and kind of how we're making that work. We're focused on Level One this year, and in our guiding coalition, we're focused on Indicator 1.4, which is working together with teachers and staff to look at our data, to collaborate, and just see if our instruction is working, what we can do better. If you notice, in Indicator 1.4, it says "teachers and staff," and we have really worked hard to align our prep so that our teachers have that time, but it's sometimes challenging to have all staff in these meetings. And so one thing we've implemented this year is, for our reading interventionists, we've created a PLC group. So we meet every other week with our reading interventionists and go over all those interventions and collaborate with teachers to ensure that we're doing the best that we can for our kiddos to help them grow. Also, within our guiding coalition, we are focusing on 1.7 Indicator, which is celebrating school and individual successes, and we do that through our House App, where we award individual student points or class-wide student points, and we have a Principal 200 Club. We do student shout-outs, so we have a box in our cafeteria where students can shout out other students and the amazing things they're doing, and we take those notes and we hang them in the hall. So it's kind of fun to see the kids' faces light up when they see that another student recognized their efforts. And then we've also recently added into our weekly newsletter a trivia piece for parents in the community to see all the amazing things that we're doing. For our MTSS, or our Behavior Committee, we're focused on Level 1.2, which is students, parents, and communities perceive the school environment as safe and orderly. We do weekly video announcements, which are student-led, and we're a PBIS-focused school. This is our third year, and we have our expectation rotations every year. So at the beginning of every year, every single class goes through a series of rotations in the hallway, in the cafeteria, near the restrooms, on the playground, and just really reiterate what those expectations are and what they look like. And then we also recently added a QR code to the bottom of our newsletter, and we put it in the foyer where the community members can give us feedback, because we wanted to make sure that we had a solid way that we could get feedback from the community. Our JSSE, Level One, 1.3 Indicator, teachers are given formal roles in the decision-making progress for school initiatives, and we wanted to make sure that the staff knew when they are helping make a decision, when they're just giving feedback. So one thing we've recently implemented with JSSE is that on our agenda, we're indicating, is this something that we're looking for feedback from? Is this a decision that you all are making, or is this just really information for you to know? And then for priority schools, going back to our mission, we belong, belonging is our central focus in our mission, and so we're always looking for ways to improve that, and how can we ensure that all of our students feel like they belong? So we are not currently a Purple Star school, but we are working towards that, and one of the things we've done is implemented the Student-to-Student Ambassador Program. And so our House Council actually comes and greets our new students, they give them a tour, they wear a little lanyard with kind of conversation starters, so they can, you know, talk to and get to know these students. Again, we just implemented that Hope Squad, and then we are planning some staff trainings for culturally responsive training and also trauma-informed practices. So those are in the works, written into our TSSP plan, but we have not done those yet this year. This one I'm really excited about, and this was last year, but I take any opportunity to mention this, we are Guinness World Record holders. Last year, at the end of the year, our 2nd graders, they became the world's longest line of affixed Unifix cubes, and so they had to put together as many cubes as they could in under 90 minutes, while they knocked that record out of the park. 92,225 cubes in 55 minutes. And this all came from the ingenuity, the brains of the 2nd graders. They wanted to do this, and so that's what makes it so incredible, is this was not teacher-led or, you know, brainstormed, this all came from the kids. My amazing administrative intern, and I would love for her to come up here and join me, Carrie Anne Carter, she's just incredible, and she reached out to the Didax Company who manufactures the Unifix cubes, and they not only donated all of the cubes to us, but they also donated $27,000, 27, sorry, that's a lot of money, $2,700 to pay off all of our student lunch balances. And then the benefits of that were discovered love for math for the students, they developed critical thinking skills. Some of the things that they did was they tried different strategies of how are we going to most quickly put these cubes together? They tried a lot of different strategies, and then just learning the value of collaboration and hard work.
Do you want to say anything about this awesome opportunity that we had?
It was cool, because they came up with it during indoor recess. They were stuck inside, they stuck some cubes together, and they were like, "We broke the world record." And their awesome teacher was like, "Did you?" And so they kind of problem-solved it and figured out they had not broken the world record, that it had last been set as 90,000 cubes in 1999. So locating the last record holder was difficult, because the internets weren't so good back in 1999. And so we did end up finding the original world record holder, who broke it, as an elementary student herself, and she did a Zoom call with the students.
Sorry, Logan wants me to record it this way. We did find the woman who broke it, she was an adult now, and she had broken it as an elementary student. She did a Zoom call with the kids, so that they could ask her questions and strategies and how she did it. It was very interesting, because they didn't have drones to film it when she did it in 1999, so they talked about putting a camcorder on a wagon and then riding it down the mile-long train. So it was cool, it was fun to watch the kids really do it, and then this group of kids, the teacher selected a few, they actually presented it R&amp;R as well, on just how to do, how to do different kind of learning strategies and how engaged they were in learning that they produced themselves. So it was pretty powerful, and Barbara was there. She was there early in the morning putting cubes together, it was pretty, it was pretty powerful to see.
Did I get my name in the book? How does this work?
I mean, it should.
It was really fun, though, it was very, lots of the kids just talked about how they were excited to use these blocks in math and tell their friends about math, so huge win. It was really fun.
It was, it was so fun, and then afterwards, when we came back to the school, I had students approaching me, "When can we start a math club?" So we're working on that, and we've got plenty of cubes, so, yeah. And we were given many, many cubes, so we did donate those to several elementary schools in Davis District, because we did have a lot of those. Yes. And so Student Growth and Achievement, I just put a few data points on here, starting with Acadiance. I did this a little bit backwards, but if you start with where we are right now, at the beginning of year, our reading data, 74% of our students started out the year on grade level or above, which is incredible, given where we started from. Beginning of year, last year, we were at 69% at the beginning of the year. And so I did invite a teacher that I'm going to ask her to come up and talk at the end just a little bit about full-day kindergarten and how much that's impacted us. But the end of year, last year, we were at 71% of our students ended the year at benchmark or above. And so our goal for this year is 76%. We want to up that by 5%, but ultimately, I mean, we would love to have 100%, but this is where we're headed this year. For math, the beginning of the year, math, we're much stronger in reading right now. Math, we started the year with 28% of our students on grade level. At the beginning of year, last year, we were at 26% of our students were on grade level, but we ended the year with 71% of them on grade level or above. So I have a lot of high hopes for where we're going to end this year. Our goal was to increase by 25%, but that only gets us to 50, so we're looking for more than 71 or higher. And then our rise data, just a quick peek at that, over the last three years, we see we're pretty strong in science, we're about 67% of our students are proficient, or that is our strongest area. Our literacy is hanging around 55% over the last three years, and then our math is around 46%. Okay, so we, as you probably know, we implemented a new literacy program this year, so CKLA and Amplify, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about the positives and the implementation of this program. So the program is broken into two parts, and it's skills and knowledge, which is a little different than the program that we had before. And the feedback that I'm getting from teachers is they're really, really enjoying the skills portion, that it is a lot more comprehensive than what we had with our McGraw-Hill program. There's a lot more grammar that's included in there, and it just feels more aligned to what our students need, and the program goes a lot deeper than the program we had previously. So we are finding some holes, just because we're moving so quickly, but I am so excited to see what's going to happen as we move through the years, and as I've been talking to my kindergarten teacher, she's been telling me how amazing it is for kinders, so I'm just excited for those kids to get to first grade, and we're going to start seeing, as the years go on, the incredible things that this program has to offer. The second part is the knowledge, and the knowledge is the stories and all that comes along with that, and they're incredible. They're giving us, they're giving our students a well-rounded view of the world. And I was talking to a student right before I came here, and he was so excited, his class was learning about the Middle Ages, and just the excitement in these students about the things that they're learning. Our 3rd grade was learning about the bodies, our 1st grade was learning about the digestive system, and it's more than just kind of really stories, they're really learning things that they're going to need to know, and the students are loving it. So I'm really excited about this program. And then the last part I wanted to talk about was the writing piece of this. It's been so fun to watch. Students are writing much earlier, and it's been really fun and really incredible, and for the students, too, they're feeling that, you know, they're empowered by what they're able to do. But one of the things you'll notice I put on there was hashtag citations and hashtag text evidence, and this was just fun for me. I was in a 6th grade class observing, and they were working on writing, and it was very, it looked very social media-like, but they would do hashtag and then kind of put a word, and I'm, "What is that? What are you doing?" And that was, they were citing their text evidence, and so they knew why they were doing it and the purpose, but it was very relevant to what we're seeing today, so I enjoyed seeing that and how they're embracing that. And then, if I could, if I could just introduce two people before I move on to this last part, so I have Cheryl Eager with me, who's a kindergarten teacher, and Danica Puente, who's a 4th grade teacher from Holbrook, and I've invited them to come up and talk just a little bit. If we could go back to that PowerPoint real quick, thank you. One of the things, before I turn it over to the teachers, that I wanted to mention is just the incredible things that these teachers are doing with this program. It's a lot of work, there are a lot of things in there, but our teachers are really embracing this, and some of the programs that they've done, or the different activities that they've done, you might have seen online, but our kindergarten actually held a Fairy Tale Olympics at the beginning of the year, and just implemented CKLA into the Olympics, and the kids are loving it, the teachers are loving it, and so I just, I want to turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, good evening, members of the Board of Superintendency. Thank you for letting me share a little bit about how CKLA has impacted my kindergarten classroom. So kindergarten is such an important year, as we know, it's where kids build a foundation for their entire education, and one student, who I'll call Lily, really illustrates how CKLA has helped students grow. Lily came to school on the first day unwilling to say a word to me or the class. She didn't recognize any letters and received a score of zero on her Acadiance assessment at the beginning of the year. With CKLA's engaging lessons, I began to see small but meaningful changes in Lily. At first, she whispered questions to me and started talking to a few classmates. By the end of our first skills unit on nursery rhymes, she did something that amazed me. She stood in front of the class and recited her favorite nursery rhyme, "Twinkle, twinkle, little star," as the class recited along with her. Since then, her growth has been incredible. Lily now volunteers to blend CBC words to read in front of the class, raises her hand during discussions, and looks for opportunities to share what she knows with her peers. I'll never forget the excitement in her eyes when she realized she could blend letter sounds to read words. And stories like Lily's are why I'm so impressed with CKLA. It doesn't just teach skills, it builds confidence and a love for learning. The results across my classroom have been just as impressive. At the beginning of the year, 63% of my students were at or above benchmark on Acadiance for sound fluency. Now, thanks to CKLA, that number has grown to 89%. Starting with this curriculum in kindergarten gives my students the tools they need to thrive. I'm also grateful for the support that's made this possible. The training, the materials, and the collaborative time have been essential for implementing CKLA successfully. Thank you for supporting programs like CKLA that makes a real difference for students, especially those just beginning their educational journey.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Cheryl. The slide that I have up is just a little bit of data that I wanted to share. So what we've seen with kindergarten with full day is that that summer slide isn't as significant, we've really, really built a strong foundation for these kiddos. So if you look back to the '22-'23 school year, we ended the year with only 40% of our students being proficient. Last year, we ended the year with 82% of our students being proficient, and because we knew that we had such a solid foundation, we really wanted to check to see, like, how much were they going to slide? And so if you look at the beginning of year of our 1st graders, who were our first group of last year that had full-day kindergarten, they started the year 74% proficient. So this full-day kindergarten is really impactful, so thank you for allowing us to do this, this is incredible. And then I also wanted to mention, just as Cheryl was saying, with the CKLA program, that at the beginning of the year, only 28% of our kindergartners knew their letters and sounds, and as of November 1st, we were already at 78% of students knowing those letters and sounds, so that was some incredible growth really quickly. And then I am going to move forward and invite Danica Puente up.
Thank you, Danica.
Hello, I'm Danica Puente, and I teach 4th grade at Holbrook, and I was one of those teachers that when we were told we needed to take letters, that I was not exactly a fan. However, once we got started and got into later units, I realized that this was not just for the younger grades. I'm grateful for Davis for giving me the opportunity to take the letters course, because what happened is that as I was taking it, I realized that there were two fundamental things that were missing for my language instruction: rich vocabulary and background knowledge. And the more I learned about the science of reading, the more I understood that our students need these things. Before we adopted CKLA, I started adding morphology into my lessons, and my students loved it. They enjoyed seeing unfamiliar words and knowing that "graph" means to write. They could break down words and figure out what they meant, because they knew the roots or the suffix or the prefix. So since the CKLA adoption, I've been so excited to introduce my students to life experiences and history of people from all over the world. The student in question that was talking about the Middle Ages is one of mine, and my students have loved the Middle Ages unit. CKLA has given my students the opportunity to achieve deeper levels of critical thinking with less effort, because of the content and knowledge-building literature that's within the program. I'm excited to see the growth for students next year and in the school years to come, because I know that we are teaching them, what they are teaching them is preparing them for their future. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just added a little bit of data on there. We started the year last year at 66% proficient, so this year, we're beginning the year with 76% of our students proficient. So I just, I want to thank you all for having us here today, it's been fun to share all about Holbrook, and thank you for all you do to support us.
Thank you. Thank you, Principal Best and the whole team. Really helpful for us to see programs in action, some of those are even ones we're talking about on our agenda today, so appreciate that relevance. Great work. We're going to move on to our next agenda item, Board. We've got some time dedicated to this, because it's a big topic that the Board's been looking at for several months, so thank you to Mr. Luffel and Mr. Weeks and lots of other people throughout the district that have contributed data and information to this presentation on pools. Tim, can we, let's plan to stop by 5:10, so we can fit in our other two agenda items. Thank you.
I first want to just start by thanking the amazing team that we've been working with on this.
I first want to just start by thanking the amazing team that we've been working with on this. You know, at the Board Direction, we have just been investigating and trying to find out information. And FFKR, our architectural firm, has been amazing. I can't tell you any of their last names, but I know they're all their first names because they're kind of like my brothers and sisters at this point. Andrew is a swim coach, is our swim coach from Woods Cross High, has been priceless in helping us understand from a swim coach perspective, how you run a meet, what kids do during a swim meet. We had no idea and he's been invaluable in helping us understand. He'll help us present tonight. So, Brian and Weston have been great pulling data together and giving information. So, before we start, I just want to explain tonight, our goal is simply to provide information. It is not to pros and cons, it's not to sell a pool, it's not to shoot down, it's simply to provide information at this point on what we've learned in our investigation so far. Can you go ahead and put that up, Jeff? So, we called it the Davis School District Swim Program Study because we're just looking at every, trying to gather as much information as possible on this whole situation. I wanted to start off just a little bit about the history. Like, where have we been? We've had swim teams for many, many years, so what was the plan? Ever since I've been here, the plan was we were going to try to put some money away in our capital program to help cities to refurbish or expand their pools. That was the idea. Over through FY26, the goal was to try to have around twenty million dollars that we could partner with cities to build or refurbish existing pools in our cities. In exchange for that money, we would anticipate swim lanes for our swimmers and kind of that was the goal. What we found out in the meantime is cities are a long way out as far as refurbishing or adding additions to their pools. Pools are expensive, as we'll talk about a little bit later, and so, cities try to get as much use out of them as they can. We've also heard from our cities that we don't give them annual funding for chlorine, for lifeguards, for those kind of things. They've expressed to us that help from the district in that area would help these things. Kind of right now, we're still working on that partnership. They use our gyms for junior jazz and some city programs. We use pools, we use fields, different things. And so, that inter-local agreement is kind of where we're landing right now. But that is something that our cities have expressed to us. I asked Andrew if he would take a minute and this next slide will talk about, oh, one more, one more, Andrew. Just a second. Where are we at today? So, we are swimming in three pools right now. We're swimming at South Davis, we're swimming at the Surf and Swim in Leighton and we are swimming at the Clearfield Aquatic Center. Farmington City or Farmington High right now is swimming at South Davis, but because they're outside of the South Davis boundaries, we pay five dollars per day per student to swim there. So, that's just kind of something we've come up with to make that work. Now, I asked Andrew if he would talk about the current situation of our swimmers and some of the things that, as a coach, that he's dealing with on a daily basis.
Good afternoon, good evening, wherever we're at so far. Yeah, I just wanted to present things from our student athletes' point of view and some of the challenges we're facing right now. I think the largest challenge that our swim teams and our student athletes face is getting time in pool, practicing, swimming in competitive meets. When it comes to usage of pool space at rec centers, because they are run by the city, all other activities take precedence right now. We find that we have a limited amount of time that's been allotted to us because of the inter-local agreement. However, because that time is not specified, it's a continually changing agreement. And if relationships between the high school teams and the cities change, time allotment can also change. We often find difficulty scheduling our swim meets. We're given certain days with specific times we're allowed to hold swim meets. If we extend past time, there are often monetary penalties that go along with going over. We, because we, some of our teams are quite large, but we were restricted to very small lane space, we have to crowd many swimmers into single lanes in order to get them to practice. That means swimmers of varying abilities end up in the same lane, which provides some challenges and is a cause for some safety concerns as swimmers have to navigate around each other. So, in addition to this, some of, maybe some other safety concerns perhaps that we find that our swimmers face right now is because they are city facilities, city patrons are there along with our swimmers and our athletes. So, there is no team locker room for a swim team currently. We share locker rooms with city patrons. We also don't have any facilities right now for storing swim gear or anything like that. And so, we find that our swim teams right now are at the whim of these city facilities and the timing that they're allowing us to have currently.
The other thing we just, the other reason that we started looking at different options was we did have patrons come to our board meeting and express some concerns from a patron's perspective about our pools. So, what have we done to look at this? The first thing we did was, as we mentioned, visit with cities because that was the first goal, was to just be able to utilize the existing facilities that we have. Since then, we've visited several pools throughout the state. Many local, most of the local pools were twenty-five yard pools. They were high school-type pools. Our swimmers swim on a twenty-five yard meet, when we have meets. So, they swim twenty-five yards. The Olympics, they swim the fifty-meter long course, but for high school swim, we do twenty-five yards. So, most of the schools have those twenty-five yard pools. St. George has, at Utah Tech, they have a fifty-meter pool we visited. We also visited some school district pools that were built in San Antonio and Dallas. The purpose of those visits was to really look at the different options that we could do as well as talk to the individuals that are running these pools about pros and cons of the situation that they're in. So, what did we talk about? We talked about the different size pools, the flexibility that comes with different size pools, rental opportunities depending on the size that we build, the cost not only to build, but to run the pool on an annual basis. And then, we talked about the San Antonio pools we visited. We saw several buses pull up while we were there with second grade students that were doing lessons. And so, about every hour, a different bus pulled up with students from the school district that were learning swim lessons. We also visited with Ogden School District. As I called around to try to get costs to run the pool on an annual basis, most of the school districts we talked to, they see the pool as like any other facility and they don't track the cost separately. It's just part of their maintenance program. So, when we asked, "What did it cost to run your pool?", it was, "Well, we don't really know." Except Ogden School District. They keep it in a separate account and so, we were able to get some costs for their two. They have two twenty-five yard pools at Ben Loman and Ogden High. So, we're able to get some costs from them. And we'll summarize costs at the end of our presentation today. We've also had many discussions with Leighton City. First about the potential use of Ellison Park's land to, if we were to decide to build a pool, if that's even an option. What would the city expect as far as usage from their side if they were to donate the land? And then, some preliminary maintenance of under our MOU discussions about what this agreement could look like. Without knowing what we're going to build and if we are going to build a pool, we would get much more into that once we decide kind of our direction on where we're going to go with that. And then, we had a visioning meeting with FFKR. They actually put this together where we were able to pull in our district athletic director, Tim Best, three of our high school swim coaches, including Andrew, the architects, the engineers, district administration. And we just spent three or four hours just talking about what is this project look? What do we want if we decide to do something like this? And so, getting all those perspectives in the same room. And then, FFKR did a great job bringing all those perspectives together to kind of do some modeling of what things could look like. So, from all of this, there is a lot of options when it comes to a pool. It's kind of like deciding where to go to dinner. There's a lot of options that we could look at. So, we focused on four right now. And as we move along, we could consider many more. So, these four are by no means the only four that we could look at, but they were kind of the big four that we kind of stood out. First is, we don't build a pool and we just continue working with our cities and the existing facilities that we have. So, that's definitely option, that's an option we're looking at. Second is a twenty-five yard pool. A twenty-five yard pool could host two or three swim teams, depending on the size of the swim team. It could host a district meet with how many teams, Andrew?
A single twenty-five yard pool could host our full district meet if necessary, depending on deck space and what locker room space is available. But would be enough to hold a semi, you know, district championship meet, potentially even a region meet.
The third option we looked at was just a fifty-meter pool. And the fifty-meter pool would have bulkheads, which are kind of dividers, which can be moved to the side or they can create smaller pools in the middle. But it's one pool that's either straight across a certain depth or maybe one end is more shallow than the other. The last one, and this is the ones we saw most in Dallas, was a fifty-meter pool with an associated lesson pool, warm-up pool. That is a shallow pool. It's about six lanes typically and it's great for like lessons. If you're teaching lessons with, that's where the second graders would come in. They would go to that warm-up pool and swim because it was shallower. It's also warmer. Competition water is cold. That's the way the swimmers like it. Kids taking lessons don't like cold. And just a little thing we learned on our trip that was just kind of funny. We were talking about the second graders in the pool and about having the separate pool and they said, "Well, one thing you should think about is if a second grader has an accident in the fifty-meter pool and you have to clean the whole pool, that's a lot of work as opposed to a warm-up pool." So, something I never would have thought about, but it came out in our meeting. So, now, we're going to turn a little bit of time over to our architectural firm. They put just some few basic renderings together. Now, as we look through these, I want you to remember, we haven't designed a pool at this point. We haven't hired a construction company. So, these are just renderings that we've kind of looked at other pools and things we've seen that we liked and things that we didn't like. And so, they'll talk about some of the pools we visited, some of the feedback we got, and then, just a couple renderings of what this might look like.
Good afternoon. We are honored to be included tonight. I'm Greta Anderson. I direct the K-12 Design Studio at FFKR Architects. This is Jessica Hoffman. She is an architect who has a lot of expertise specifically in programming. And Caitlin Gilman, she is an education architect as well and she has a lot of experience in the pool, swimming as a youth. So, that's been very beneficial. And then, I want to point out Tom Anderson over here, our very trusted pool designer and consultant.
If we could pull up the PDF slides. There we go. Okay, so as Tim said, we had the opportunity to travel to eight different facilities. And one thing when you're designing an aquatic center and auditorium is the aesthetics, the look and feel of the space are really secondary to the operations, the performance and the maintenance of the building. And so, the opportunity to visit these pools was really beneficial because we could talk directly with the managers and the operation directors. And you can see here on this list, we won't go through them all. I'll just quickly flip through. Oh, too quick. Oh, you do it. Okay, I'm going to put the clicker down. Yeah, you can just scroll and I'll just speak to, just high level, some of the key takeaways that we heard and which Andrew touched on is deck space is absolutely critical. I think every facility we toured, they said more deck space. For meets, that's where all of the athletes hang out. And for safety and clearances, deck space is optimal. Storage is the same, unsurprisingly, with most schools' facilities. You can never have enough storage. And we had a lot of good information about storage for team equipment, wet storage, dry storage. And then, probably top of the list, I maybe should have started with this, operationally is air quality, acoustics in this space and daylight as well as, you know, electronic, the lighting in the space, ensuring there's no glare, tempering any sort of outside with the glazing. So, those are just kind of some key highlights. Again, a more comprehensive list is here and if there's any questions, we can touch on specifics.
Thank you. And you can skip to the diagram layouts. These are just some images of the pools that we visited, so you can scroll through those later. Greta, did you want to go through the site?
Yeah, I just, right, thank you. Just to orient to you, we know we have a lot of student athletes who would be arriving to this site from I-15. So, this site has really great access. And that's I-15, of course, that you see there on Hillfield Road. So, that is a great benefit and it's a nice flat site as well. Next slide, please. And this is a little more detail. This is something we call a test fit almost, where it just demonstrates that we can fit whatever we want on the site, any of these options, except maybe option one, which is to not build a pool. But any, any of those others will fit quite nicely and we've had great conversations with Leighton City and understand some of the parking solutions that we could collaborate with them on as well.
Great. So, what you see here is really just building blocks. In programming, we have to consider each of the spaces and how they can be arranged and how big they are in relationship to each other. So, you can see the legend kind of identifies each of the different spaces that are required. And you'll be able to see these diagrams all throughout these options that we're going to show you. So, next slide. So, this is an adjacency diagram really, where we take all of the building blocks and we show how much space it would take up to build the pool in its entirety. Or, you know, that's how we understand, "Oh, it'll fit on the site." Or, you know, "How are we going to arrive?" We kind of have a lot of considerations. So, we're able to kind of scoot these around and move them so that they start to make sense. And the next slide, this is just a three-dimensional representation of that. You can see the spectator seating, you know, where we talk about, where would that be best? You know, probably in front of the view, you know, of the, from the... Starting blocks, thank you. Or, you know, where's the classroom best? And we move those kind of things around. So, this represents option one, which is a twenty-five yard competition pool. Okay, and the next one, this represents option two, which is only the fifty-meter pool. And you can see the movable blocks that are shown in the center that Tim was talking about. And you can scoot those around depending on the type of competitions that you have and where you want to start and how many students or teams that you have represented in the meet. This would give you a larger spectator seating capacity, clearly. The first one I neglected to mention would be about six hundred spectators. This would give you up to twelve hundred. I don't know if you've been to any of the swimming meets, but that space can get a little bit crowded. So, we like to kind of think about, you know, how many teams are going to be represented and how many spectators are you going to see? So, twelve hundred seems to be a good sweet spot. And then, the next one is the three-dimensional representation. You can see we can wrap two sides with spectator seating and still manage to get all of the pool equipment space that's needed around the pool and all the other supporting locker rooms and general support spaces. And then, the last option shows both the training or warm-up pool and the competition pool next to each other. And this, you know, is, shows some efficiencies. There's always an efficiency of scale when you're able to share a pool equipment space, you know? So, the spaces become a lot more efficient that way. And then, the next slide shows that 3D representation of how they might be able to be arranged. We can even take this further to some other options if that is something that, you know, we want to explore. It doesn't have to be this configuration, like we said before. These are building blocks that can be moved around. So, any questions about the technical stuff? I don't know if you have any team questions. I think on our tours, we kind of talked a lot about how can the bulkheads be arranged and how can, how many teams can be on each pool? So, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask.
So, the input for locker rooms, the number of, you know, the seating arrangements, classroom storage. Just, can you speak to that? Is that, is that just a historical kind of thing? This is kind of what's been done in the past? This is what we've found is most successful? Or is that, is that like a coach and others maybe in the district? I mean, where's that, where's that input coming from?
Yeah, a lot of that comes from our education experience and the... Yeah, a lot of that comes from our education experience and the previous work that we've done. But then we combine that and work really closely with Andrew. And, you know, the pool tours were very helpful, talking about how districts and communities might share a pool. We've got several consultants on our team representing electrical, mechanical, and clearly pool equipment. Depending on the pool equipment type that you decide, you know, the cost of each type of system, how that can be arranged, that all goes into the programming document. And it is a complex kind of matrix. We've really kind of narrowed everything down. There's a lot of possibilities, though, that are moldable based off of the district's unique root needs. Yes, absolutely.
That was well put. I want to say too that historically, the way we've seen and done locker rooms for these spaces is evolving a little bit. And we saw a lot of lockerless rooms, which was great, or lockers in hallways. So, these tours were very beneficial to see how everyone's doing it today and give us some options that would really, could really save us some money and make the spaces much more efficient. Because, in truth, the student athletes go in and change and then bring their bag out on the deck. And so, we don't maybe need to build as much of that infrastructure.
So, another question, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to add to the other way that we gathered information was the three to four hour visioning session that we had where we had everyone in one room and just sat together. So, representatives from Leighton City, the swim coaches from various high schools. And that was beneficial because we could say, you know, in this scenario of a swim meet, walk us through how that would work, hear from the different high schools' perspectives, you know, professional engineers' perspectives. And having everyone in the room together is also what allowed us to sort of understand what that might look like.
Another question I have is, in relationship to cities, Tim, maybe you can answer this. But are we, if we were to move forward with the option one, the twenty-five yard, is that ours? And that, there's no city involvement in that as far as the financial? And there's no sharing of that pool with the city?
The current, the current situation that we're considering is with Leighton City. If Leighton City were to donate the land per se for the building of the pool, if we decided, then they've expressed a desire to have time for their patrons to swim laps. Now, they're, they're fully aware that this would be our swim facility for our swim teams, and that's the number one priority. But they have expressed a desire that when our swim teams are not in the pool, to be available for city patrons to be able to swim laps. But that would be part of the MOU agreement, once we, if we decide to build a pool, then we would get serious about the MOU agreement and with the city on all the details of how that would work.
Have we looked at options of buying our own land?
We've discussed that briefly. We've had Brandon Wood, our real estate agent, go out and look at different spots in this area. And there are some possibilities. Okay, so let's talk about these four options just really briefly. And we're going to talk about just considerations with each option. I don't want to call them pros and cons, I just want to call them considerations for each option.
So, from, from a pool usage standpoint, if we, if we're talking about option one, not building a pool, but working with the cities, perhaps by giving money or working with them to help re, re, remodel some of their pool space. We're going to continue dealing with some of the current challenges while providing money to them might solidify some of our time and usage space. There's still going to be the issues of holding swim meets, both at competitive facilities and being able to hold them when we need to. And they're going to continue to have all of their activities that are going to overshadow and take priority over the, the high school teams. And it will continue having kind of the issue where our Davis School District teams and our student athletes don't have facilities of their own similar to other sports in the district.
From the financial perspective, obviously, there's no capital investment on option one. We don't have to come up with any money to build a pool. And we wouldn't have to find ongoing resources to pay for staffing, maintenance, supplies, chlorine, things like that to run the pool. So, obviously, this would be the cheapest of the, of the four options.
Now, speaking to the, the option of building a twenty-five yard pool, we're assuming that a twenty-five yard pool would be probably ten lanes, meaning it's about twenty-five meters across, which would give it some additional functionality. If built, whatever area of the, the district it would be built in, it's primarily going to serve the closest high schools. With ten lanes, when we talk about lane space and how swim teams practice, we typically allot lane space based on how many athletes are in each team. With ten lanes, this is typically going to benefit approximately two medium-sized high schools. Maybe Syracuse is a, is a good example of the, the size that we're talking about here. Or three small high schools, which would probably be like Clearfield, Northridge, and Leighton that have currently smaller teams right now. That's about three to four lanes per school at a time, if you have some creative scheduling. It would give us some options for holding swim meets in the district amongst the nine schools that are all going to want to hold swim meets at this location. And you have some limited additional use that you could use the pool for depending on what the focus of the pool is. If the, if the pool is built with a focus on competition, you're going to limit the ability to hold swim lessons and some of the community things that they might want to use the pool for.
So, in the next, for this one, the next two, obviously, the capital investment gets larger, the ongoing cost gets larger. And I'm going to summarize those costs after we're done with the four options. So, I'll just let Andrew go through the different options first.
Now, addressing the option of building a fifty meter pool without the extra or additional warm-up lanes, again, depending on how the pool is built, if the pool is entirely built with a focus on competition, you might limit other additional uses such as swim lessons or other community uses. Mainly, when we're talking about this, we're talking about swim pool depth. Deeper pools tend to be more competition-focused, which is not necessarily the best thing for perhaps our, as we saw the second graders come in and use the pool facilities for various swim training activities, which was pretty neat. But that would limit their ability to use it. You could cater the building, or cater the building of the pool to have both one end, maybe more shallow end, not so competition-minded, and another, the other end be deeper and more focused on competition. There is, we saw many opportunities at some of the pools that we toured for academic usage as well, certifying lifeguards. And then, I mean, many of our swim, swim team members are already certified as lifeguards because they're in the space. And it provides, you know, some good job opportunities and some skills that they, they learn that can be learned at all three of the, the pool options. Fifty meter pools do draw large competition interests, simply because there's not very many of them, and especially not in Utah. So, it does allow for the option of pool rental for big pool competitions, USA Swim competitions, sometimes even across the nation. And at the pools in Dallas, they, they rented to, you know, internationally. So, with the fifty meter pool, again, it, it does depend on how the pool is built and what the focus is going to be. And finally, if you add in the warm-up lanes, again, they're typically shallower, a warmer pool area that is more catered for community use. We call them warm-up lanes because they can be utilized by, by swim teams that are in the facility. It does also give additional swim space for schools. When we, so for a fifty meter pool, typically, we're going to see at least twenty lanes that are now available. So, that, we're doubling the size and we're doubling the amount of high schools that could potentially use the space for practicing. And with creative scheduling, that can be the entire district. If you add some warm-up lanes, you have additional lane space. You're able to have a competition pool that is focused entirely on fast competition swimming. You have enough lane space now that you can rent out the facility to swim clubs, swim lessons, other community uses. You have, as mentioned, the prior academic potential for lifeguard training. And now with the, the warm-up pool, the, you could potentially do some programs with the second and third graders coming in to learn some swim safety.
Mr. Hart has a quick question.
Just, just a quick question. So, would the warm-up pool accommodate the lap swimmers?
It, yes, it certainly could.
That would be fine for them.
It's typically also twenty-five yards long.
Yeah.
And it, they, they can also add in lane lines to separate the lanes and can be used for lapsing.
And, and the land at Ellison is large enough for that one as well, for all of these?
Jeff, can you throw that back up? We're going to talk about costs now, but before we talk about costs, I just want to preface this by kind of using the analogy I said before. We're kind of a family deciding if we're going to go to dinner or not. One option is to stay home, which has no cost. One option is to go to a restaurant. If you go to McDonald's, your cost will be far different than if you go to Ruth Chris for dinner with your family. We kind of don't know where we're going to dinner yet. If we're staying home, or if we're going out, or if we do go out, which, where place we're going. So, you're going to see ranges here. And it's just because until we have, if we do decide to build a pool and we have an architect, or the architect actually designs the building and we have a construction manager come in and actually put cost to this, we're going to use these estimates for this point. So, to build, so option two, twenty-five meter by twenty-five yard pool, between thirty and thirty-five million. This would include all costs, including we have to do utility work, site work, parking lots. So, this is just not the pool itself, but it's the ground around the pool as well. Fifty meter pool with no warm-up, thirty-seven to forty-five million is what we would be thinking. Fifty meter with the warm-up pool, forty-three to fifty-one. So, that's kind of where we're thinking right now. We could obviously bring that a lot closer once we know where we're going to dinner, okay? In addition to the building costs, we've got ongoing costs. And we were able to get this data, as I mentioned, from Ogden School District. Twenty-five yard pools, which what they're having, they're spending between four hundred and five fifty a year to maintain those pools and to provide staffing. That includes the pool manager, the staffing, the lifeguards, the supplies, pretty much everything it costs to run the pool. If we went to a fifty meter pool, we're talking more like nine hundred, two million dollars per year. Obviously, it's bigger, we have, the staffing wouldn't be that much different, but the supplies cost a lot. Our pool consultant, Tom, told us, water is great on its own. It's when you put humans in it that you have to start treating it. So, the more humans in the pool, the more cost it would, it would generate. Just quickly, it, it's hard to ascertain, because we don't have a pool in northern Utah, how much we could rent the pool for. The pools that we were, we were able to get information on, they rented the pool for about four hundred dollars an hour. So, a two-day swim meet at ten hours a day, that's about eight thousand dollars of rental income. We could do lessons, there could be other opportunities. It's just hard to wrap your head around it right now because we don't have one, so we don't know what that might be. The eight thousand dollars, we, we would have to pay some cost out of that, so that's not all pure revenue. But that's kind of gave us an idea of where we might be able to rent it. If we do decide to pool, build a pool, how do we pay for it? So, there's some options that we can think about. We have reserves. We talked about twenty million in our capital fund. We have general fund reserves, we have economic stabilization, which is the board savings account. That is an option if we decide to build a pool. I will tell you, there will be some financial consequences if we use our reserves to buy a pool from our bond rating agencies and some of those kind of folks. But it's definitely, we have the money to do it if we just chose to do that. The second would be a local building authority bond. This is how we built Island View Elementary. There doesn't require an election or a vote of our constituents, just the school board. Acting as the local building authority could decide to bond for the amount of the pool that they would need. Another option, which we haven't talked about a lot, is we could put this on a general obligation bond in November and have the county vote. And it could include just the pool, it could include other facilities. And the county could vote to say, yes, we want to fund this, or no, we don't. So, that's an option that we could consider. So, those are probably the three ways that we could, if we just decide to build a pool, that we would be able to come up with the funding to do so. So, that's the information we wanted to present tonight. Hopefully, it was just, just the facts, ma'am. We're trying to just try to present any, as, as you consider this information, look at the presentation, feel free to reach out to me with questions, or tonight if we have any. The architects are wonderful to help respond to questions, Brian and Weston. Tom's a great resource as well, so that's what we wanted to present tonight. Are there any questions I could answer right now?
Ms. Hogan, we'll start there, and then I'll work down. I saw Mr. Robinson's got a question as well.
Okay, well, I actually have a lot of questions. And I don't, it sounds like maybe we don't have time.
Yeah, I think, let's, let's take ten minutes or so and see where we get. So, maybe do two questions, and then we'll move to another board member and cycle back.
Okay. Because this is something that, because I'm not on the pool committee, I haven't been able to discuss much with my fellow board members because we have to do it in an open meeting. So, I was really hoping to have a discussion about this before we make a decision, but maybe we'll be able to have another opportunity to do that.
And just, Ms. Hogan, I, I think I want to just clarify there. There, there will be more, I mean, I don't think we're, we're not making a vote tonight, obviously. And the, the direction and kind of the discussion of this group will determine when a vote's pertinent. So, I don't think we want to fill Raj to a significant decision.
Okay, so I just want to start by saying that the concerns and practice situation of the swimmers is not ideal. And their case is really compelling, so I just want to put that out there. My questions, though, are just, I'm unsure how we're going to be able to afford this and whether we should pay for it. So, I guess, two questions. Okay, one of my main concerns is the maintenance cost per year. And I, I'm not sure where that funding comes from. I know we have about six million right now in the capital funds per year. And my understanding is that about two-thirds of that goes to roofing and heating our buildings. So, we have like ninety-two buildings. And so, with this, depending on what size, if we decide to build a pool, depending on what size, will that money come from, like the two million that we have left for all the schools for the year?
So, the, the maintenance, the ongoing cost to run the pool would actually come out of the general fund, would not come out of the capital fund. So, capital fund money would be used to help build a facility if we chose to go that way. But the ongoing would have to come out of regular revenues that we budget every year, which obviously have other things we could spend it on if we chose to. But that would come out of our general fund to run the pool on a year-to-year basis.
Okay, so it would not come out of that capital fund? Okay, if we, if we pass a bond, where does the bond payment, where, where do we pay that money from? And is it, besides the reserves that you spoke of, which I wouldn't want to go into to build a pool, would, we, we do need to go into debt to build this pool, is my understanding?
With the twenty million we have set aside currently, if we were to decide to move ahead with the pool right now, then we would have to go into some debt to build the pool. One option we haven't talked about is saving up for in future years. That's something that could be considered. But if we were to make a bond, if we were to do an LBA, a local building authority, the payment for that bond has to come out of our capital. So, that would be something we'd have to figure out. If we were to do a general obligation bond and put it on the ballot in November and let the county vote, that would, we would be able to take that out of our debt service tax levy, and so that wouldn't come out of capital.
Okay, and the twenty million, we, do we have that right now, or are we still saving up?
We have two years of it, so we'll have the third next year.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Robinson. Okay, sounds good. Ms. Barber?
Mine's more of a comment, if it's okay about the upcoming, some upcoming legislation about, would that be okay? I was just going to make a comment, we talked a lot about the additional educational uses of a pool besides just providing for swim teams. And there's actually legislation that's being proposed right now, it's an interim session. But it's a really interesting bill. It talks about school swimming and lifeguard programs. And it's actually going to be heard tomorrow afternoon. But it basically talks a lot about, about what you guys said. There's requirements for expanding water safety instruction for certain circumstances and allowing that for students to be... and allowing that for students to be there, as well as lifeguard training. So it'd be kind of like the secondary swim lessons you guys saw in Texas. It'd be making available lifeguard training for a lot of people who maybe wouldn't have that ability already. So I think that's a consideration that we look at, that this is bigger than just serving our competitive swim teams, which is a huge part about it, but it's expanding education opportunities. I look at a lot of the elementary schools specifically that I represent, and a lot of them are Title I schools. And I think the idea of getting them to have kids to have swim lessons that maybe otherwise aren't would be something really fantastic that our district could look at providing.
Thank you. Ms. Price, did you have a question or comment?
I just want to say thank you for the information. And as we were going through it, I thought about, I'm not trying to like overcomplicate this, but would we be able to find out how much it would cost to do the 25-yard pool with the warm-up pool? So then, if we did decide to go that route, we could still have something that the district could use for other swim programs, besides just competition swimming?
Yes. Any option that the board would like to consider. FFKR's been really nice to run those costs for us, and so, yes, we could do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Gerard? Well, I did have one question and then some comments. And so, so those numbers, they were put together, because I know they can't, we can't be specific because we don't know what we're building. But we've had some discussions about new ways to, not to build the pool specifically, but to house the pool on the outside, that may not look as beautiful, but are a lot less expensive. So has that come into play at all?
Yeah, I think Caitlin alluded to that a little bit, that if we were to build a pool, our focus would be on the functionality of the pool more than the look of the pool itself. Put our money where it matters the most.
Okay, so you took that into consideration with those costs? Okay, okay.
And that's why there's a range.
That's why the huge range. Okay, okay. Well, you know, my main concern is doing this because the kids in our district need it. And so it's filling a need for our students. And I just, I think it's interesting, because this has been an ongoing conversation that we've been having for a very, very long time. And some people might not even know that, how long these discussions have been happening. And just thinking about that first option of waiting and waiting, we've been waiting, and with the way costs are, I think they're going to keep going up, it would seem. And then, and so that was just a thought that I had. And originally, when we had this money set aside, like you said, it was to be working with cities. But as was mentioned, cities are five-plus years out. And then, five-plus years, what's the cost going to be then? And so that's something that I'm thinking about. And I just, I don't know, I'm thinking about the different options. And the smaller pool, something that I keep thinking about is, would we be in the same boat in a few years with the smaller pool? I mean, because the pools that we are using are going to get more worn out, like the Leighton pool. So anyway, just some thoughts, just some thoughts there. But I really appreciate all the time and effort that's been put into the presentation, all the work. So thank you.
Thanks. Tim, can you go back to the slide that just lists the potential cost ranges?
Yes.
The question I have is, you know, traditionally, we've done like a guaranteed maximum price, or we've bid things out in different ways. If the board were to select like a cap, if we said we want to go with the dotted I pool, but not to exceed, you know, 44 million or something, like when we start to get into the 50s, it's really hard to pencil out. I like, I don't want to exceed double of what we've saved up for, I guess. But is there a way to do a design-build contract or something that we haven't done historically to be able to set a limit and then build within that range, and kind of design within that range?
I think we could absolutely do that. If the direction from the board was to take the next step, the next step would be have our architects actually design a pool to which a construction company could come in and put cost to it at that point. And we could tell them, this is where we're at with the budget, and I think we could program around that. The only tricky part is, when it actually comes to doing the bids, when we have, to get that gross maximum price, we've put a lot of money into the design of the building and the architectural firm drawing the building. And so if it came in higher than we had anticipated or wanted, it's, we've already sunk a million and a half dollars into the design of this program. And so that's where it could be a little tricky, but we definitely could, with that cap that the board would give us, we could try to design something around that, yes.
Julie, did you have a question?
Yeah. So I came across Farmington Newsletter, where they had just recently announced they're going to remodel their pool situation, and all their models included competition lanes. Have you guys explored that possibility, that consequence, and also how that might affect, maybe Leighton could swim there?
We have talked with Farmington City, and there was, at one time, the desire for a competition pool. Matter of fact, the county reached out to us at one point about building a facility such as that. But the conversations that Craig had had in the last year or two, the cities weren't anywhere close to doing anything like that.
So this was a very recent newsletter, so I was just wondering if you guys...
So we can definitely reach out to them, for sure.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Great. John, you got the last word?
Yeah, I made this point when we had a previous discussion, but, you know, we've talked about a lot of things. There's been a lot of options, obviously. We've seen some different, you know, designs, whatever. But, you know, I haven't changed my opinion about the fact of, if we were to move ahead, then I think our focus should be on what our athletes need and not what communities need. If this is district money, it's taxpayers' money. And if we build this for our athletes, then I think we have to be very sensitive to the fact that we spend as, I don't want to build a cheap pool, but I also don't want to build a pool so that we're attracting competition, that we're building it so other people can come. I know that'd be great, but when you look at, when you look at the price tag, and then you compare that to other sports, I mean, everybody here realizes that pools obviously are going to be much more expensive than a softball field, or a baseball field, or a football field, whatever. But we're still talking athletes and athletes, you know? And so to me, if we continue to move forward, which I think we should continue to have these discussions and ultimately make a decision whether we're going to build one, and if we do, what's it going to look like, and what's the service that's going to provide for our young people? I think we need to keep in mind that this should be designed to benefit the young women and young men that are in our schools. And anything on top of that, I think, has to be looked at in relationship to, yeah, but if we go there, it's going to cost us much more. And that has to be factored into any decision we might have to make, in my opinion.
Thank you. I think my mic's back. Thanks. I'm going to recommend that, this has been a really good groundwork, I think with a lot more objective data than we've had, you know, it brings a lot of information together from the last few months in the pool work group. So I'd like us to continue the discussion in our, we're really, we're workshopping again in two weeks, basically. So it's not a long horizon, but I think that's a good opportunity for everybody to look at this more in depth. And then I would recommend that, send questions directly to Tim. That way, he can be the fielding place for receiving that, getting the, you know, the responses and information we need to be prepared for a discussion in workshop. And the goal of that workshop, I believe, should be to really narrow down onto an option or two, so that we could take some direction. We're at a point where we need to start focusing that discussion, and I think we could get a lot closer next workshop. So thank you.
Ms. Mumford? Can I just ask one quick question?
Yeah.
My second question. So you guys mentioned a possibility of a district swim club. Now would that, with that possibility, would you just have lesser coaches? Would we save money as a district in that way on hiring personnel?
Andrew has experience with district swim programs.
Okay.
Sorry, just to understand your question. So talking about a district swim club, can you just repeat that one more time for me?
So what exactly did you mean? Did you mean like the whole entire district, instead of like per school, or like a club type?
Yeah. So some options or things that we saw in Texas specifically, because this is not something that currently happens in the state of Utah. They have district-sponsored club swim teams that are part of essentially USA Swimming, that start at a swim lesson level, and then they work their way up into competition level. Not currently how they're run. In Utah, most commonly, they're either privately owned, or you have like a parent board that would run those clubs. So the other option is, at the pool, what essentially you would do is, a swim club that would want to participate at that, at the pool, would have the option of renting the space. So...
My understanding, that brings in a lot more money than like public pools.
Correct. Yeah, that's, generally, if we're talking about, I mean, if you're looking at trying to offset the cost of the pool, most people, or most pools, offset the cost of the pool through the rental to a USA Swim Club, and then the rental for the meets that they would then hold as well. There's kind of a back-and-forth benefit to both the high school swim teams and to the swim clubs that tend to work closely together.
Right. And in your opinion, is that, so I was talking to one coach, who said they had a big invitational at BYU not too long ago, and they brought in $20,000 for that meet. Is that something that, if we got a bigger pool, that we could do routinely?
Yes. The examples that we saw at Texas were pretty, there were some variants, but it was, it's pretty common to see that they would hold a large swim meet, at least one per month, and with the potential to run more than that, outside of their high school season. Swim goes year-round, and they change the way the competition works based on the time of year. They'll change the pool format to either be a 25-meter pool for 25-meter season, or the 50-meter pool for 50-meter season. And then they rent out the pool accordingly.
And do you feel, as the Woods Cross coach, that you would really utilize, you know, this pool space in, if it was in Ellison Park area? Like, is the South Davis not adequate for you?
South Davis is the best pool in the area currently, and it is a competition pool, only at the 25-yard and slightly at the 25-meter distance. So it would be difficult for the schools on the south end of the county to send their whole swim team out to the north end, if we're talking about the Leighton area. So for practice purposes, maybe not as convenient or useful for the schools in that very south end, but certainly for use as a competition pool, for holding the swim meets we'd like to hold. Currently, most regions right now in the area all come to the South Davis Rec Center, because it's the nearest competition-level pool that they can find. There's not any other options.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, FFKR team and Coach Hunter. We really appreciate your expertise tonight. Board, I'm going to recommend that we move item number four to a future workshop meeting. You got a little teaser tonight about CKLA and the great things that are happening in our elementary schools with that curriculum. So we'll delay that. And I'm going to turn the time over to the superintendent. He just has a brief update on our class size discussion from last month.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. And I'm just going to stay up here for the sake of time. And I wanted to just do a quick, a really brief overview of what we covered last time pretty extensively, so forgive the speed. Thank you, Dr. Toon. So as soon as we bring up that PowerPoint, you'll see it. I'm going to just hopefully bust through some slides that you've already seen and remind us where we left off in this conversation, and hopefully tee up future discussion by the board and a way to get some good recommendations to the board. So again, a reminder, we talked about the acceptable range in our district. This is where we range our class sizes in elementary school. And again, the numbers here are exclusively elementary. This is, you know, an elementary issue primarily. I haven't had board members or the public talk to me too much about, you know, my son's 11th grade math class being too large. It's typically elementary. A reminder, this is probably the best slide I could find that gives you a sense of how strategically we look at every school in the district. This is the second part of the, you know, our spreadsheet. Maybe it's page three, four on our spreadsheet, where we look at class size. Of course, red is large, blue is small. When we consider a split, hopefully you remember that conversation, what kind of drives that discussion. And of course, at the end of the day, we do, we do let teachers choose and make that choice whether or not to keep, to hold a split, or to have larger class sizes with, you know, discussions with their principal. This is the source of funding for those things when we deal with class size issues in a school. And then, of course, the cost to reduce class size, starting with a class of 37, and reducing it down to a class of 30. So that seven-student decrease is important, because the research speaks to significant class size reduction versus just nominal class size reduction. Here's the class size ratio slides that you reviewed, and of course, Dr. Toon's slides that gave you a snapshot of what it kind of looks like, what we'd call small classes and large classes in the district. Remind you that this is not anything new. My sense is that we could look at class sizes from the last 20 years, and we would see the same kinds of sizes. But this board has shown interest to look at, you know, just because it's new, just because it's not new, doesn't mean that we don't want to keep looking at this. So I think we appreciate that we're going to continue to examine this. This is summary of the conclusions that we have, running, you know, our best data on split classes versus non-split classes. And so there you go. Because part of the conversation for us was, should we require schools that are running larger classes to run splits? Because there's something about the number, you know, 35, that really concerns us as leaders, concerns parents, concerns teachers. And so we have a sense of what happens with splits. We're not seeing, we're not seeing great gains based on doing splits. In fact, sometimes it's detrimental. And then the bottom line in the research, this idea that we really are looking at, in Utah, we don't talk a lot about class size reduction. It comes up periodically, but not even perennially. Where we talk about class size reduction, because there's this idea, this question, is the juice worth the squeeze if we're going to spend the kind of money it would take to truly lower class sizes? There, you remember the Hattie effect size for effective effect on the classroom, fairly low on the effect size. It still has an effect, but there are just so many factors that go into this, that maybe our energy, the idea among education professionals, especially in Utah, is that our money and resources could maybe be focused on other things. And then this idea that, as you, this is from the University of Utah, again, where pay increases are more important to teachers than smaller class sizes. And then there's that space in the middle, less stressful job responsibilities. And we think maybe a key element there, and I mentioned this, is giving them the right kinds of supports in their classes to make, to lower the, kind of the stress in the classroom by providing other supports. And then, this is my administrative recommendation, that the finance committee takes center stage on this, in this space, develops strategies, recommendations, really studies this and looks at priorities. That way, the board can funnel a little better conversation with members of the finance committee. My sense is, the new year, that may be a new committee, that there will be at least some new members there. And then funnel questions, concerns, conversation pieces, asking them to explore certain pieces, and have the finance committee bring a recommendation to the board. Short of doing, you know, what is, you know, a wholesale shift in class size to try to get to what, you know, the national numbers say we could be, I think most of our options around... around are, you know, fall into that bulge money, TA support, behavior support, some of those things that are still expensive, but maybe, maybe worth really channeling, you know, some, some funds in that direction. Keeping in mind that, you know, just for a 1% increase in our, among our staff, it's about $5 million. So when you consider that most teachers historically have chosen a raise, even a 1% or 2% increase before they, they would choose a, a one or two student decrease in class size.
Can I ask you a question? I was wondering if we could ask our teachers, like how they feel like, okay, if we try to cap sizes, class size by funding bulge money, you know, extra bulge money to below 35 or whatever, at least in the elementary level, and see, would they prefer that versus that money saved for a raise? Like, can we just ask questions like that?
That's a great question that we talked about in leadership with the superintendent.
Yeah, I think we'd like to do that. I think we'd like to ask and, and just lay out really as transparent as we can, all the, all the dollars that it would cost. I think Dr. Toon's already starting to wrap his mind around what that looks like. And, and to just really ask, and, and honestly, I think the DEA would probably appreciate if we, if we could send it out through our means and, and probably get a higher response rate from all of our employees about what's critical, so that when, when we're in the place, we know what we're negotiating for. I think there's another piece of that that's, that we do have to consider, that we talked about in our presentation, that as soon as you say, we're not going to allow classes over 35, we, we know that we'll absorb those, those splits from schools, that those will become, you wouldn't run a split if you know that you're gonna get funding for classes over 35. And, and there are other mechanisms as well that you do in terms of balancing grade levels and all, lots of things that we haven't talked about, that if we did just kind of blanket say that we're going to bulge, cover all bulges over 35, that number would be larger than any number we've presented so far.
Can I just make one more comment? So the numbers that you give in order for us to reduce class sizes, you know, 37, 36, whatever, that takes away what's actually happening, all the extra funding with the TSSA, TSP and other extra money. So I, I think we should also consider the fact that that's not really realistically gonna happen anyway. And you're already making some decisions that maybe aren't equitable across the board like that. So I, I think that conversation needs to be had as well. We actually are still gonna have that money, the extra money.
Yeah, I think the finance committee will have to look at that, like how different funding sources may supplant each other, depending on what your incentives are to keep class sizes low, when those are site-based decisions.
Yeah, so, so when I look at kind of other just school districts in negotiation agreements, they know that these things are complex, and they'll say, okay, so in this situation, then we do this. And they know that you have to be flexible, like you can't just do a flat cap, there's flexible situations. But we can, I think we can definitely have this conversation, where we can increase funding to help the situation, and maybe approach it both. Maybe we can just have, like, I, I don't, I just, so many teachers mentally, once it gets over a certain number, it's just like, ah. And we also have other things that are contextual besides just this Hattie. When I did my own research, there's definitely a lot of people who disagree with Hattie's stuff anyway. But I, I do think that we can, it's kind of contextual, when we're talking about a lot of behavioral issues that we're having as well, like it's when you have a lot more behavior issues, when you have bigger numbers, it's just, I don't know. I just think this is a more of a contextual discussion than straight.
Yeah, and I, I think that's what we're, that's what we're proposing. I, you know, the, the Hattie was one summation slide, all the research I presented was only on class size, it wasn't, none of it was Hattie's research, that's just a neat bullet. So all of the research that I presented last month was, was completely, you know, the national research that is, is solid a research as there is in this space. But I agree, I think that's where the surveys come in, we need to talk to our teachers and give them all the context, and let them just tell us, you know, where their priorities are. And, and I think that'll be the best information for the finance committee.
Ms. Barber?
Uh, just one quick comment, I just wanna say thank you. And this is exactly what we asked for, because this was a huge topic, we're really getting out ahead of it, and we're bringing, coming back, so I really appreciate that. And that was one of the things that a lot of us asked for, was specific feedback from our own teachers, so I think that will be really helpful. And from my perspective, I think there's more ways to address this problem than just a broad reduction in class size. That seems like a, really, you're not really solving the problem there. I think, and we talked about a lot of the fallout classes, you know, if we have a bulge class, sometimes it's other classes that are really gonna struggle. So I think that's where those behavioral helps and aids, things like that, that we can do that are, like, in the classroom, support that, we'll see. What I've observed is it's an immediate impact on there, so the more we can do that, the better. My question is, you said that we'll work with the finance committee, but I mean, how can we, how can we get estimates? Like, what does that look like? More TAs, more behavioral specialists, just so we, just so we know, rather than just broad ideas?
Yeah, we've, we have good numbers on, on what, right now, we have a behavior task force that's made up of, it's, it's probably too big, it's, we have a lot of people at the table, that's, that's really exciting. And so we'll have better numbers there. We do know what our behavior interventionist cost and those things, and, and what schools would say, we could use these, these numbers. Same with TAs, our, our focus of cabinet has been training our TAs and having rigorous training, which means an investment, because that means we need to bring them in before contract time to really train these people. Because right now, we have a lot of, you know, great parent volunteers doing a lot of work. In fact, some of those parents might enjoy some of the training that we're looking at, so that they hit the ground running when they come into a classroom, they understand PBIS, behavior interventions, and they also understand, you know, CKLA and, and literacy interventions and some of those things. But those things, we have to pay, we have to pay good TAs to get that training.
Awesome, that's great info, thank you.
Yeah, I think the finance committee's the ideal location to get into those details. It also allows new board members to, that are gonna be transitioning to this board in January to participate in the process, and it can bring into effect kind of what the legislation is in this next session and, and budgets. So I think that'll be a great place. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn our meeting, we've got a 20-minute break, and we'll excuse the board to go upstairs.